I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for October 19th. Your tour. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. This should be a pretty quick agenda, I hope. Want to try to get us out of here at a decent time if possible. I want to start by reviewing and approving the minutes for the October 5th, 2022. Select Board Meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes. October 5th, 2022.
Gotcha. I'll second it. All right. Any comments? I think I got, I think there was one email just with clarification on one part that was missed. I don't know if we updated that in here, but. Do we want to, do we want to add just a statement about the, about Father Gill and Segal auditing firm? That they were dropping our audit because they're under treasure, the third bullet?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's on the video and I think we.
Just that, just that it was auditing services backed out to bid for next year's audit.
Right, nothing because of anything negative, just that they were no longer doing the municipalities.
I'm good, I'm good with it as written. It's again, it's on the video, so. All right, all those in favor approve of the minutes? Signify if I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes passed. We'll upload this stuff over here and assign them. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I said we could put Shane up front.
Sure. Sounds good since he's here.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Sorry about the confusion on stuff.
Yes.
The only other thing is I did not do a policy update number last time.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
When it's quiet now.
Sorry about that. So we'll take that off. We'll strip it from the agenda.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so we'll just, we'll. Adjustments, we'll just move Shane with the powder spring road driveway thing up top here. Okay. Anything else good?
I think everything else is good to me.
Rock and roll, we'll move on. Okay, Shane. So Tristan and you got, you met last week?
Tristan and I met with one of the owners and the other owner. We met the day before because they couldn't make the following day.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. I do have, so I had a conversation with. I had a conversation, oh, sorry, with, with Dan Webster, just with his concerns. And I talked with Harold a little bit about it as well. I think, and Carrie and I talked about it. We're not sure that the town actually owns the property along that roadway.
Okay.
I think it's right away. I think it's just right away. So it's not necessarily
Ours too.
Ours property, but it's, it's within the town right away. I think Dan's concerns are more about, are more along the lines of the Brook and the space from the Brook. I know you talked about the power pole and that wasn't an issue at all.
Not according to Steve Hart as far as distance wise, we're fine there.
Okay.
Like I say, Tristan measured, said that he was all good with it.
Yep. So I mean, I think the only thing I would encourage you to do is make sure that, you know, if there are any state permits for, you know, that work, that you're just in line with whatever the state regulations are with regards to the Brook. But otherwise, I'm, I'm okay if we, you know, just because of the nature of that space.
Probably just like reach out to Patrick Ross, Street Altitude Manager, get that back from him.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, beyond, I mean, that's, that's at the state level, so that's not really.
As far as I can reach, I think.
Yep.
I think Patrick, yeah.
And I don't think, you know, for Tristan and I talked about it as well, and I think at this point, it makes, it makes sense just to approve the, because we're not really changing much of anything.
I think what he saw, what we looked up was that the renewed construction, if somebody was building something new up there, then it was 25 feet away from the property line. Since it's an existing building up there, it wouldn't fall under our zoning laws of having to be 25 feet away. Is the way Tristan and I kind of read it. I don't know if that's what Dan sent you.
The statute that they forward to be, that's exactly how it read. It was stating for new construction.
So, I mean, he said that Washington Electric has a 25 foot setback rule for power poles, but I think that's for main roads. I don't think that's for driveways.
It could be new construction as well.
It could be new construction as well, yeah.
Like I said, I spoke to Steve Hart a couple of times and he was, he was fine with it.
So I mean, I guess the, Dan's other concern was that it's town property, not right away, and that it would require an easement if it were town property. Part of it is that because I think it's in the right away, it doesn't. I don't think it matters.
It's not like they're asking to, for a new.
Yeah. Well, we're not, it's, the curb cut's not changing, it's just where that is, where that driveway access to the property. And I'm assuming, because it are, even if it is, this is my other thing, I think even if it's a town, even if it's town owned property, there already is access existing, so it doesn't really change the access there, and it's not like the town's going to develop that strip of property. So that's where I, I think, you know, at this point, I'm, I'm happy to, to just sign off and move, move forward with it.
Yeah, I think we certainly done the light work on it.
Yep.
I think Tristan certainly did.
Yep, yep.
Literally beat the bushes on it. Yeah.
So do we move on as a motion?
Shane, it goes to 65 feet.
Do we, should we?
There was 65 feet at least that Tristan had measured there.
We were above 50. I imagine there's going to be some sort of legal.
I don't know, I can, I can. Yeah, I can reach out to, I can reach out to Gavin. I mean, I think if it's a right away issue.
There's going to have to be something written up.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to, yeah, we should probably write up a letter or something at least that says that it was approved. I don't know what you think. Sound like what we should do?
I would, I'd reach out to Gavin to find out. He would know. If that's, if just, if the letter's going to be enough or if we could do something else. But, yeah, I'd move forward with it, but.
Okay. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll draw a letter. I'll make sure Gavin, our town attorney, reads it, make sure it's all good. And we'll sign it and.
I'll do a reach out to Patrick and get this written in and what we look next.
Yep, and I'll try to, I'll try to get ahold of Gavin in the next couple of days. I was able to communicate with her. So I, I will, what's that?
I brought his cell number.
I've got his cell, I got his cell number too, so. Yeah, so I'm going to, I'll just, I'll email it off to him, I'll give him a call probably sometime tomorrow. Try to get it back so we can get it signed by probably Monday at the latest. But I don't, I think we're agreeable for you to proceed and we'll, we'll provide you documentation. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Okay.
I guess I could have moved Borack up too, but I think it's too late for that now.
Yeah, that's all right. I think that, I mean, I wasn't anticipating that Rachel was going to come back to the meeting.
I didn't hear from her, but I thought maybe.
So I think, you know, just after reviewing the, I think we looked at the maps, reviewing the roadway. I still, you know, stand with the determination it's a class four road. We're not going to plow it. I know it's, it's a, you know, tough situation, but Green Road is plowed up to the power lines where the turnaround is. I'm assuming that probably has something to do with access to the power lines, I'm sure.
I think.
It's class three to there.
Class three, correct. That's what I meant. Class three to there, which is where the turnaround is and back. But it would be talking with Harold in order, the only other way ahead would be to reclassify it as a class three road. They would have to pay to bring it up to that specification, not the town. And then they would have to submit a request for that to go and then from here to, from us to the state, which is a lengthy process. And I just, I think it's not, it's not really a feasible option. So that's, I think, what I'm thinking.
I mean, it's unfortunate circumstance that it is. The, it's probably also worth noting that the town highway budget is for class two, class three roads.
Correct, yeah.
So the highway department has done a good job of getting their budget pretty tight. And, you know, even spending 30 minutes a week plowing that stretcher road over the course of winter is going to affect, negatively affect the budget. So, I guess, just to be noted that, that highway budget is for class two and class three roads, so.
So do you want to write a letter to Rachel since she isn't here? So it's a little bit more formal or?
Yeah, I mean, I, we couldn't put together a letter. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, there's, I know there's resources around within, within the state, within the region, or within, you know, Calabany County and Orange County. There are resources that may be able to help, you know, her with costs, but I, you know, again, that's, we don't. Be kind of on, on her to try to look for those resources, so. I'm sure, I'm sure there's, you know, somebody out there that would help. And the other thing I'll say is, talking with Harold about it, as we stated before, if there's an emergency and FAST has to respond and the weather's adverse, that, you know, he, he would be amicable to the FAST squad calling to have plowed for emergency access only. So that way, if they do need to call for medical services, you know, an emergency, we would still be able to get that emergency access. Okay.
Well, I can try to write something and I'll put it in the Select Board folder and you guys can approve and unapprove.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that sounds good.
So she has an answer.
Yep, yep. Okay. All right, moving down to the board grant, Groton Gateway. You guys can come up too if you want.
I feel weird because we're behind, but, well, you know.
So there's not a lot of folks here, but what we're, what we're trying to aim to do is get folks to come up to our podium-esque or table area so that we're part of the, part of the meeting to, to talk about stuff, so I should have said that upfront.
Sorry, I'm being outlier because you're going to be.
I'm traveling back to my house.
So Gary and Mike and Mike.
Yeah.
To talk about board grant, Groton Gateway updates.
So much progress. Unreal. No, we haven't, we haven't even had an agreement yet. But we've been meeting. Yeah, soon. We've been meeting every week or every month and just sort of preparing for when we have our agreement to review. We'll come with that agreement here. I know the state's preparing it now. And they've been asking some questions. And one of the things that came up was that in the agreement, there's various terms and conditions based on what you're doing. And one of the things we're doing is acquiring land. Their terms and conditions for that are very long and because you're, you're using state money to buy property.
Yeah.
Our case is totally different. And so they, you know, we're stepping in property for a dollar or $10 or something. So they came today and they were like, you know, because you're acquiring land, you have to have all these extra terms and conditions, things that we require things that aren't in your, weren't in your grant application. And I talked to Gavin and Gavin was like, here's all you need to do for this, just take name land from someone. He was pretty good about it. We cost it out, put it in there. I worked with the state on it a little bit and they're just like agreeable to doing everything we put in the grant that Gavin said to do. And they'll support it without all the extra terms and conditions. But one of the concerns that we had as a group was like, what if there's something that comes up, like an extra expense, extra cost that like, we're not sure how flexible the grant is for coverage events that like, we didn't anticipate. So then we were thinking like, should we?
Costs.
Yeah, just, yeah, I don't, we're not sure what, you know? Can't be too much, but like, should we, I don't think we're talking like, you know, should one of our departments, should my department plan? Should we put like a cushion in our budget, something just to cover something in case something comes up? The thinking was, at least it's there, we're fine enough to use it. But then the other thinking was, we have two years to implement this. So if something comes up next year, we can just put it on, bring it forward the following year too. So, you know, we have a little time. But that's what we were coming in for.
Right, well, yeah, but if it wanted to be done next year, your budget meeting is coming up in two Saturdays. You know, you have to be really proactive on these conversations when you talk about money, you know? So, you know, if, if we wanted a budget for money for just in case, you have to talk about it now, this time of year. This year in 2022 or in this time of year in 2023 to 2024, you have to really plan ahead. So I thought it'd be good for us to come to a Select Board meeting, get it in front of you now, talk about it just in case, you know, you might say, oh, well, we have professional services money set aside for some case, I don't know. Or it can come out of this reserve fund or whatever, I don't know. We're hoping that we don't have to do that at all, you know, all come out of the grant.
Yeah, it's all hounded because we haven't seen the agreement.
Right.
That's the sort of.
Maybe it'll come up until maybe November or something, middle of November.
Yeah.
Hopefully this year.
So, yeah, so. I think, I mean, I'm, I'm open to us having, you know, funds if needed kind of laid out. You know, as you guys know, our, our, this budget year is going to be
Yeah.
Very challenging because of things like inflation and things like, you know, trying to be, you know, as fiscally responsible as possible with, you know, with the budget. So that's part of, you know, where we just kind of have to make sure we've got it balanced correctly. I'll also say, I mean, really the budget, we're going to have Budget Day in a couple of weeks, but at the same time, you know, if something happens between now and the first meeting in January, we can make, you know, we're still going to be able to make adjustments. But what I think, what I would like to avoid this year, this budget process here compared to last is we need to, we need to make sure that we have a, this is the last day of the budget and everything in the budget is going to be approved so that, you know, we, and we're going to have to warn it at some point, but, but anyway, just kind of.
How was town meeting this year? Australia Valley or traditional?
No, it's going to be traditional in person.
So change can be made on the floor.
Correct, correct.
Which is the difficult part.
Which would be a little bit easier.
Which, yeah, now which bumps that, which bumps Zach's January out really until the first.
Correct.
Right, that's why I'm asking that question, because when you go Australia Valley, that option is completely off the table.
Correct, correct.
And there is the records that are like, we can talk.
Yeah, we can talk about.
Yeah.
I mean, I, that's what I. Because it is a recreational project.
Yeah.
Although accepting property really isn't, you know. Although there, that is just a nice property for, for recreation, anyway.
We kind of rack our brains more like, what did we not anticipate?
Which property is?
The Greemount Power.
Greemount Power property, yeah, that's what I thought. Figured I'd clarify something.
It's cool. I like it there. Every time I go there, I'm like, we need this.
Nothing on Groton Park.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it was, where did they offer us that?
That's like a steep slope next to 232.
Yeah, that's right.
Also acquire more like a 50 foot wide strip of land.
No, I think.
You can't tax it.
So we thought about it, we were, the only thing we really thought about, we didn't anticipate in our grant application was bidding out the work we're doing. So the advertising.
Advertising.
So I was going to increase my advertising budget and for planning probably is, I think I have 300 plus.
100?
For 300 general expenses, 100, I'll probably have like just a 600 advertising budget or maybe split between expenses. Just to cover that, I think, I think it'd be covered by a grant though. I can't imagine we still have to pay that. We tried to think of everything, but legal fees were one. I know when I talked, when we were preparing the grant, I mean, I just talked to one of you, I think, just like we talked to the attorney about the, you know, the stuff for the grant, we spoke a little bit with Gavin, but.
But we haven't, you know, until we get the, the information back from the state, we don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. You know, what you can really submit for it.
I hear it's pretty loose, but I mean, I just don't know. I've never.
Well, you don't, you don't want it to be grant in, a grant proposal that is specific enough that doesn't allow you to use any of that funding for legal fees or otherwise, which could potentially happen.
No, we put in, I think it was 5,000 just in legal fees and in consultation with the town attorney alone.
Yeah.
Then we put in for additional subcontracting legal fees for a title search or some, whatever Gavin recommended and he got pricing for. And then Greemount Power, you'd be a price for drafting a deed, and I kind of just threw that in there. I asked Gavin if that was it. He said, probably cheaper, I just put the higher amount in.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah. With inflation, I'm glad we used high amounts for just about everything, actually.
Okay. So, I mean, yeah, I would say, you know, definitely if you think you need additional funding to cover, you know, miscellaneous fees, yeah. I mean, and if, you know, if there's a reserve there that can cover.
I mean, I would, I would like echo Zach's statement that maybe this year isn't the best year to bump the budget. I would say the thing you guys go, going for you is the board supports it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So if something legal, we do have legal services, as Gary knows. But if something comes up, you know, the board supports the project. So I mean, I think personally, like, I'd be all right with digging into the town's, you know, legal services if something came up in the year, you know?
Planning doesn't use its entire budget ever. So even, you know, if I, I could probably cover all the ads with our budget regardless.
I mean, we've got an advertising budget too, and we've only got $40 spent out of the 300.
Well, that's plenty more than like 300's budget.
But we're just, we're just trying to plan ahead and be upfront.
Yeah.
Yeah, and all this time with no agreement, we've been just thinking of every possible scenario.
I was actually camping a couple of weekends ago and I'm like, what's going on with that? I haven't heard anything, but we've been waiting for the.
We're meeting, talking.
They email me and call every once in a while and ask questions. They, they make some, set some, you know, bidding things out and I, I emailed them back and was like, you know, we're not going to bid out like our legal things. And they're like, well, we'll have to get back to you on that. And I was like, no, like, we're using the town attorney like for anything legal. Because I read through it and I was like, it didn't really specify. And I was like, I specified in the application that we'd be using the town attorney. So they were, they still got back to me on that, but I'm sure that's the case.
And the town policy on professional services doesn't have to put it in there.
Yeah. I think that's.
I'm wondering if it has something to do with the way they formulated the grant, that they want those things to be put up a bit, but I would agree, I think we need to.
I think an inexperienced person responded, but I don't know them, just like it's all by their response, that they were like, didn't want to say yes, but didn't want to say no, you know?
Sounded like you your first year when you were working for the state.
No, it was pretty good. I mean, just dealing with people a little differently, but I, good, I'm a professional. 10 years of experience outside of out there, so.
You knew how to answer the question.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I guess, you know, I would, I would definitely say, you know.
In good shape.
We're, we're in okay, but we've got, you know, again, the boards, like, like Aaron said, Aaron's absolutely right, we've got, you know, other budget lines that we may be able to use to help with, in support of the, of the, of the project if need be, so.
If something really comes up, we can just push it. Not, Dave, I can't imagine anything like, Dave, Dave, but we can push it for the next year.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, I guess my point is, is see like, you know, the board supports the, the project. So it's not like, hey, sorry. Hey, you guys didn't plan that out, you know? Yeah, no, I think that, yeah.
So. Okay. Any, any else on board grant?
Uh, got, uh, the University of Nor, or Norwich University is doing a study for designing a bridge across the Well's River in Groton. The, the location, they're, they have two locations now, ones where, where a bridge was proposed way back when. Sort of at the, this end of the Sarkis property. There's a little strip of land down to the.
The old Orange building.
Yeah. Yeah, down, so there's a strip of land down and it's private property, but, but they're, they're designing a bridge across there. It's a really easy spot to put a bridge. And we've got to talk to. It's not like they're committed to anything. They're also designing a bridge as an alternative across our Tannery Brook Road, it used to be. So it's like a pedestrian bridge that would lead into the, it basically takes you right up to the rail bed. It's just not an ideal part of the village. To like sort of fit our, one thing about the board grant, I thought I was, the state looked really favorably on the idea of connecting the trail with the village. So this project, this, this helps with that. It's a, it's a group of, I met them down at the stump that was two engineering majors and two construction management majors. Really, really smart. Their, their professor's really smart and, and they, they basically put a plan together that we could use for like future grants. If we like, you know, it's a shovel, we basically made a product shovel ready. So if there's grants in the future for like detransfer, better connection, you know, pedestrian traffic or even more if, if that, if it happens again in the future. This could be like something we could just go, we want to build this bridge and finally finish our gateway vision, so.
Cool.
That's going on. We're not paying for that.
How did that all come about, buddy?
Actually, was that Greg Western was that one, right? And then I have UVM contacting me about building a bridge over there too, from someone at work at the state that took me up with like a UVM class that does this. Yeah.
Gary always used to be Arniaho, would have the Norwich kids come down and do something, but we didn't have that connection anymore, so just kind of curious how we.
Yeah, well, get their professor to come in and goes, you know, we've got other projects.
You know, I have classes I could go, I could go pitch projects to, classes. I've done it for the state just because I think it's, it's fun. I've got a bunch of stuff in my plate at the state that's such a low priority stuff that I'm like, oh, college class would love to go over there.
You know what? They do too, because it's real. It's real. You know what I mean? You can design a, a bridge on computer all day, you know, all day long. But like to design something, have an engineer sign off on it, and then a year later, see your footbridge. It's, that's pretty big. It's pretty cool.
So that's it. I've got planning update too, I can give real quick. That's okay?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Gary, do you want to mention Hatch Bridge? Yeah, so, and probably all of you know, we redep the Hatch Bridge. Yeah, noticed. Yeah, so that came out really well ahead. So that was done by the Buckle Rizzle 302. We had 18 volunteers show up for that on like three Saturdays ago.
So we put down $7,000 worth of lumber on that. That's for just 71 feet long. It was an all day project from like 9:30 to 6 o'clock at night. To get it done, we did have a few injuries. One, one kid to the hospital. Something got shot with a nail gun. A couple of people fell halfway through, caught themselves, but it was definitely dangerous and needed to be done. So the, we got money from, FAST paid for the materials and Crossmont Trail, put money towards it also because the Crossmont Trail started using that bridge. We had to redesign it so it was, could be used by bikes. They couldn't have any wear treads and had to have a solid surface on the middle, which required a lot more lumber than to do it that way. So it's all two by six, fresh treated lumber, all on edge, all the way across. So it should be good for 20, 25 years. So I thought it came up one full and we repainted the Hatch Memorial sign and hung that up over above and got some good compliments and from the Hatch family and. and got some good compliments and, uh, from the Hatch family and.
No, I mean, I, I drove by it the other day and it looks fantastic, it looks really good.
Kind of part of the whole river bed also.
Yeah, and Board will use Board to, you know, grade and make that section up to the bridge that's really modest of Harold's House over, make that look real nice, so, you know, it'll be nice and contiguous there.
So, so I have, my Buckaroo's piece is kind of connected, if I just want to continue. So, one of the parts of this is to gravel the railroad bed. Uh, you know, we'd set aside in that grant a hundred and twenty-five thousand for gravel, probably won't, with the price of fuel and all that, it probably would come up short. One of the things would, that would have to happen for that is the railroad bed would need to be deep brushed in order to have the ten-wheelers open down, they're not going to want that stuff. So I decided, or Buckaroo's decided, instead of spending money on deep brushing it with equipment, that we are deep brushing the railroad bed this year in preparation for that work next year. So we are cutting it back hard, not just hitting the loads, we are literally cutting it back. We're downloading the banks. So if you wanted to look at it, we started last Saturday at the Pine Mountain, uh, by Close Farm. And it'll come up to Doug Pond, uh, towards the stuff, halfway in the stump. And we'll continue Saturday from there and go to the stump dump and maybe even get farther up through.
Your anticipation is to get the whole thing, up the bills done this year or?
All the way to Rick's Pond.
All the way to Rick's Pond?
This year.
This year?
Yep, yep, I'm concentrating every weekend there, maybe to complete that. We'll get it all cut back, so it'll be all ready for next year. So it's, it's slow work, we only do, probably get a mile in a day with eleven volunteers. So it's all volunteer work, no cost, we don't have no cost to grant.
You got a chipper, you're getting stuff rid of or just tucking it over, so?
Don't open it. I, I, I was this close from coming to a meeting saying, you know, cause I know this is a nice big chipper sitting in the garage, about doing that, but I would have to have a qualified person running it, I can't have my volunteers running going into that. And I remember when we did the cemetery, the backlog, even though it's nice. But I just remember the train of kids carrying their one branch, so that, so that your dad could put it in the chipper. So I, I don't, just don't.
I think that's like, if you got like three or four people, you're probably okay, but if you got eleven people, you know, it does.
Yeah, we're on chainsaw, all off, you know, is it?
And so part, part of putting the gravel down is going to be regrading parts where it needs, cause I know that there's some pieces of that that are just tire tracks basically.
Okay, that's called ponds.
Yeah, or, yeah. That's the other side of it, yeah.
And, and, and redoing culverts, we've identified, I went through and counted all the culverts, uh, I think there's forty-two of them. And there's about, I think, what did it say, eight or ten?
I was gonna guess ten, it was Aaron's ten.
Did that need to be replaced? So, you know, and a culvert now is four hundred and fifty dollars. You know, so that in itself, uh, is going to suck up some money.
We should find out if Harold's buy a culvert, maybe see what's new.
It is like the Gary did.
Yeah, they did earlier in the year.
What about Fish Bridge project, wasn't that, is that going to be on the rail trail?
It's a little, no, that's on Little.
That's on Little.
That's on Little, yeah.
Did you guys sign that for the?
We, we did, I think, yeah, last meeting they corresponded with us, that they ended to play until next year, I think cause they ran out of funds or something.
That's a double cullvert? That affects the railroad bed, that goes underneath the railroad bed also.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was underneath both.
I want to say that's what we said, was, cause it was, so that'll be next year.
Are they talking about, they're just making a design for it.
Is it, is it designed bridges or culverts?
No, I think it is.
Is it culvert?
Culvert's what they say, but I think what they're trying to do is there's a step up right now. I think they're going to get rid of that step up so the Burke Trail can go up over.
The one on the railroad back, then they don't like the fully submerged one on. I was that there, I'm like, do you see this? Oh, like, looks great to me, water's going great there, like, if I was a fish, I'd be sort of do that, they're like, well, that's not it.
Yeah, so, um, I think either way, they're moving it to next year, so it may actually line up.
Want to make sure anyone's digging up something that these guys.
Well, they're just, she's just making a plan, and then they apply, they use that plan, it's another shovel-ready project that they can apply for grants for and stuff.
Yeah, we would have designed, possibly, let's just try and make it come to come through.
I just, the reason I mentioned that is I just know the state hates culverts. They pull out as many culverts as possible to put bridges in, from what I see on, on, for some parts of them.
Yeah, I met the state down there.
I've got a five foot by twenty-four foot one that can walk.
What, bridge?
Culvert.
A culvert? I don't know if we need to. We need to talk to Aaron about that.
Let's say about a tunnel.
We're going to tunnel that a little.
Yeah, I just thought I, um, so I guess I just wanted to let you know that, you know, it, cause it is town property, that we've started doing that type of maintenance with volunteer work, all trying to, um, get the most bang for the buck out of that grant. By, you know, by the club volunteer to do that work.
Well, I, I'd like to say that that's, I mean, that's, one, I don't think anybody in town's going to not support, you know, you guys helping maintain things like a, a trail that's a publicly used trail that is, you know, part of our town recreation, but not just that, I mean, there's people from all over the place that are passing through on that trail. And I think, you know, it's, it's great that we're doing, we're being, we're able to maintain that, we're able to do, you know, get, get grant funding to help, you know, pay to fix that, keep, keep it maintained and, and, you know, volunteer work for Buckaroos is fantastic. Again, because it's work that needs to be done and it's work that we don't have to pay for.
And for the future, it might benefit businesses in town, I mean, if we start getting traffic from snowmobile trail, which to me is the clear winner as far as traffic on the, on the rail bed. But bikes and everything else comes into town, or has a bike to eat, life stream or something, you know? That's, that's the, that's the end goal of the connection, you know?
Need to keep traffic down, you know? Get rid of people in the village. Enjoy it.
Cool, all right, any else? No, thank you, appreciate it, thanks for coming, the great update, you know, it sounds like it's, well, the Board grant stuff, slow going.
Our grades are going, the Board grant, not so much.
It's the same way with the infrastructure project, it's slow going, things are happening, but it's slow.
Yeah. For, for planning, for planning commission, we just finished our zoning bylaw update. We had our public meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
I think it was twenty-seventh.
Yeah, uh, we had some comments mostly about just the way things were written, or, um, Dorothy provided almost all the comments. NDA provided some, and then we noticed sort of at the last minute that the map that was in the zoning bylaw, uh, we didn't even think about updating. So we're scattering out to get that updated, and the only thing we saw on that was that the conservation district, which is state-owned land, has changed since the first map was put in there. So we're getting that together, the next step will be putting together our final version at our next meeting, so, you know, integrating the comments we got, that we got, putting them in there, and then presenting them, I believe, to you.
I do this.
Yeah, uh, I'm not sure, that'll probably be sometime, it depends on, we also forgot something, uh, there's a ten by ten building exemption that we wanted to build into the zoning, so if someone's building a eight by eight.
Chicken coop or?
I think chicken coop.
Tool shed.
Tool shed, yeah. They don't have to go to Dan for a permit, uh, we were trying to put that in there and for some, it seems like it might not be, and so we're trying to figure out, can still put that in, I'm not sure. So, yeah, that's where that's at.
So are those, the select board can approve those?
Yes, I believe that's the process.
I don't think it gets voted by.
I don't, I think it's the select board, Gary, you went through it.
Can the public comment on it the night the select board sees it? Can again, yeah.
But it's like, yeah, it's, it's like anything that comes before the select board, before we have a vote, we'll open it to discussion, public comment, um, so.
Yeah, there's a whole process we can follow.
You said you had.
Yeah.
Your check sheet.
Yeah, we're like three quarters away on this, on this check sheet that Gary's going to certify, uh, that we did everything right, we'll put.
Gotcha, all right, great.
What about that river protection?
I saw that, you said that yesterday, for instance, tomorrow, I have some questions, we can kind of, shall we get it? We didn't love the fact that the entire lake is in the flood lane. I mean, when you look at the map, every single person's house on the lake is, is essentially, let's say they have a fire, they have to build it, you know, on stilts. And we think it's not right, but that's, you know, we don't love that. Obviously, we want to see protect, you know, we don't want to see structures built on the Wells River and then have them wash downstream and wipe out the Power Spring Bridge or something, you know? That, that type of stuff makes sense to us, like the, right, the river boundary, but, but seeing the lake in this large circle around the lake, both lakes, and speaking to people who are like, we've never seen it flood, and then looking at the lake and being like, how would this flood? Cause I've, I've lived on pond before that, what happened was the river that the pond flowed into flooded and the river went into the pond, pond came up, flooded all the houses. And so, it doesn't seem like that can happen on Lake Dawn, so I'm kind, it's curious why.
And I think, and Gary was at the IRE, the, like, the water came up like eight inches or something like that and ground pond or?
It wasn't bad, but my mother's rental was fine.
That was fine.
I mean, I've been up there after some big rain.
That's, that's dam control, so.
Same with the lake after that I was talking about, I was standing, in the third IRE, standing in water, my shoulders untied in a boat, so that I could have slack, so it wouldn't sink. Tying it to tree.
Flood, what I remember, you know, being ten years old, the flood in seventy-three was far worse, as far as the lake.
Did, how many people's houses?
I just remember the water height being higher.
I think Brett mentioned that one.
Well, it was different, was there no dam then or what?
No, no, but the dam was already there, I don't know what.
Just the amount of water that was coming in?
Yeah, I don't know what made it different, I just, just remembered the lake water being higher.
Maybe it was because of the little.
That's something we're, we're going to get back to, I don't know what we'll do with it. It's our, they identified too that our flood bylaw, we have flood protection bylaws, I believe, are outdated.
Yeah, that's part of.
We could have put it into the zoning bylaw, but we refused because they're not fully done yet, uh, with our maps or something, so we were just like, we'll keep it separate as it's been. They weren't ready for us, we were ready to just get our bylaws from like, in like, two years or whatever.
We're doing after bylaws, town plan again or?
I don't know. I think that, uh, well, hazard mitigation plan is back, had it, we'll, we'll go to that for a second, because that doesn't require too much of attention.
Is that what this female letter is about, is that flood protection stuff? You can have that, I mean, we got, we got a copy.
They might have provided us with these maps, yeah, this is probably, it's just telling us that they're just maps are being generated. They might not have been finalized yet, uh, cause they were saying by twenty twenty-four, we would have the maps that we could put in our flood bylaws. Flood clean, yeah, we'll probably do hazard mitigation plan next. That, and NDA is kind of console.
You mean again?
Again, yeah. But not have an emergency, but take out then, or we have to provide on a percentage because of that. They're, they're doing ragging ours together. And then whatever, I think we did identify one of the bylaws, like expires in the next few years, well, not the bylaw, the town plan. Cause you keep it up to date, then you can apply for grants and things like that.
It's every ten years, town plan.
Yeah, is it eight?
It's ten times.
We might take a couple, a couple of months off after another bylaw. Yeah, this subdivision keeps coming in, and that was the start of it, and then we did the bylaw.
All right. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll keep rolling on department updates, so, uh, anything new, Mike, for NEK CUD?
Yeah, the only thing that's new is, um, we had talked back in September about me doing an info session across the town on some of the stuff. I kind of put that on hold because I heard from the director that they were going to, um, be doing a build, refining or, or finishing their build plan. And so, um, that gets presented to the governing board on Saturday, we've got a board meeting summit, all-day summit thing going on. So I'll be updated then in terms of what the build plan is, and I think that then is a good point, uh, if we want to sort of have a little info session in town to, um, use that roadmap that they're coming up with here. To do so, which would probably be December at the earliest, December or January, or maybe we just wait until, I mean, we, it's, it's up to us and we can talk about it offline or whatever. I think that would be a useful session, just to update those people that are immediately, or not immediately, but short-term impacted by things, but also, offer the update to the rest of the town in terms of when they can potentially expect service and things like that, so. And other things that we want them to do, like fill out and register with NEK broadband, so they start to get their, their radar for when they're starting, when they'll be ready to start to do outreach for customers and things like that, so.
No, that, that sounds, that sounds good, and I think like the info plan, maybe, I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to be an open meeting as part of the select board, but it would be a good, it would be a good thing to have, for sure.
Yeah, I think it would be a good public service thing, just to give people the opportunity to at least learn if they're interested. That's it, I haven't heard anything else and I'll be, I think Saturday's meeting is, is like a six-hour meeting, so I'll find out then, I'm sure if there's anything to do with the OLT equipment. That kind of got to be.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Infrastructure project, I talked to Gavin on the phone Monday, maybe, he called me?
Today's Monday, was it two days ago?
It was two days ago, yeah, one, two, I don't know, it's all, all of it's running together. He, I missed an email from him on the twenty-third of September, that got buried, so I, I, when I talked to him, I was like, oh, yeah, I looked and he'd had responded. So he laid out the process that we need to go, that he's looking at to go through for easements and et cetera. First he started with, because, he was reaching back out to the surveyor, when he said, the surveyor didn't find anything that identified the width of Mill Street. So what Gavin told me, clarified to me is that, you know, if there isn't a defined road width, that the road width we go with is three rod. However, as I was talking to him on the phone, he sort of, I don't want to say backtracked on that, but he also clarified that, um, for consolidated communications property, we would still need an easement across, because of where that's going to land, it won't be within the right of way. And then also where the sediment collection, um, ditch, where it will go into the ditch along the road. The ditching probably doesn't need an easement, but where that, where that sediment trap is going to be is going to need an easement, cause it will be, the construction of that will be outside of the right of way. And then he said that, uh, we'd obviously need an easement to cross the property to the river. What he said, what, what he told me is, is this, he needs, he, he, there's a couple of things that he's going to clarify with the surveyor, um, first. Second, the historic preservation assessment needs to be completed before he'll start easement work. So here's what he told, so let me, let me back up one step, so he said that the historic preservation part needs to be done first. Once that's completed, Nate needs to finalize the plan, and then once the plan is officially finalized in its final rendering, then he can do the easements. So he said he can start the process of getting the easements prepared, but would not want to push those out until.
It makes sense, I mean, if something changes the Nate's plan between.
Well, based off the conversation we had with Sean and with, that I had with Sean and Nate when we went and walked down. when we went and walked down there, is if historic preservation says where he's currently planting it would require test holes and, which will put the proj, project probably a year, a year further out, is, he would negotiate with them if he moved it further down Mill Street or, or moved it somewhere else to cross that property to the river. You know, would that change their assessment? So he was gonna, so if that really is what.
Didn't it sound like Sean was, from the USDA, always referring, well, we need the Mill Street easements done before we do this? You don't think that's how it went?
No.
With Sean?
No. I don't remember, I think, well, Sean, what Sean, what I remember with, with what Sean had said was, historic preservation assessment needs to be done.
Right.
Easements need to be done before we can put it out to bid. So I don't know that he specified the ordering of that, but, you know, that's kind of what my take is. So I guess what we need to do is to, you know, wait for the follow-up from Nate on where we stand with the historic preservation assessment piece.
Well, I'm gonna be talking to Nate because I need to work with, um, you got the email about picking, um, the con, the consults for agricultural consults?
Agricultural consults.
Yeah.
I saw the email, but I'm not.
And Nate sent two pages of recommended, um, farms, and he says, go with UVM first, and then if they can't do it, Charlie Knight, because he used to work with UVM, and now he's sold out on his own. And then third, go to University of Maine. Those are the three that he recommends, um, or he said UMaine, I'm sure, assumed that was University of Maine. But I'm gonna talk to Nate probably tomorrow to see if he, but I wanted your blessing on which one, if you, if you want to go with what Nate is proposing, is doing those three.
Yeah.
And, and then Nate will write out the letter and go to them, and, so I just wanted your permission to ask him that, and then I can ask him about this historic preservation case.
Yeah, yeah. Um, no, I, I mean, I'm, I think it's good to go in the order of what he, what he chose. I mean, Nate would know best, I, I think, so, um, that's what I would say.
And that would go off Nate's recommendation, you know, more than we would.
So, I mean, I, yeah, and it seems like there keeps coming, all, all of these, you know, um, these pieces are coming up that are complicating it a little bit more, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it seems like there's multiple checkboxes that we need to get through before we even get to the point where we can do an easement, so.
Right.
But.
And then Sean also sent a long list of all the things that we have to give to USDA. So I'm starting the list, and I've emailed Nate, see if he's available. We already did some of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of it.
Like two things out of the 12, I think we've done.
Okay.
So, I mean, I feel like, you know, we're starting, and, so I'm gonna work with Nate again on helping me, because I don't know if I can fill out everything.
I mean, not to mention your budget's getting, so it's shortened, so you're running out of.
Time.
Time for the.
Lisa, did that USDA person I raised you to at the conference, was she helpful at all, or no? There was a USDA regional person.
Yeah, you told me it was a woman, right?
Yeah.
I think she was for St., was she, is she maybe for St. Johnsbury?
Uh, I'm trying to remember what the business card.
So, yeah, so Sean, who we're working with, is who we were, the regional rep that we were assigned to.
Yeah.
In the project.
Yeah, because I, I ran into her, and she's like, hey, anything I can do to help, I don't know what that means.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we met Sean, and Sean said, what, he'd been on the job for like two or three weeks?
Yeah.
Or something.
But he, he called me after he sent that email to see if we, if I had any questions, and I hadn't even read the email yet, because it was just a bad time. And so, he seems very, very willing to work with me as well, so. Between Nate and him, at this point, I think we're, you know, in the start of it.
I think we're moving forward.
I, I still think, I mean, as, the, the biggest piece is the historic preservation piece. If we're able to get that done sooner rather than later.
Right.
I mean, I, I'd really like to try, if at all possible, for us to be on track to put it out to bid this winter, to start it for next year, because I think it would make a heck of a lot of sense, so, um. Any.
Yeah, I think you can.
Any other updates? I think, I don't think there's anything else for that project right now.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Um, and sort of off topic, but the other thing Gavin asked for was how everything worked out with the, the, uh, any K broadband. So he'd like, I'm gonna send him a co, just, Mike, so you're aware, I'm gonna send him a copy with, uh, of what we signed, and so he's got a copy for his reference.
That part, not the OLT cabinet.
No, 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 just the, just the agreement with the ARPA funds and that, that stuff, so.
And is he officially retired?
No, he's not officially retired, but he's, he's answering his phone calls still, so, um, or he's, he's at least communicating, he's gonna give me a call. He was gonna give me a call either later this week or next week, just as a follow-up to the conversations he was having with the, with the surveyor. Because the surveyor referenced another survey, but didn't put this other survey in there, it's an older survey, so it was, anyway. So, okay, anything, I, that was really it for the infrastructure stuff, so. Okay, uh, anything from highway? I don't think so.
I didn't see any emails.
Nope.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, treasure.
So as you all know, I was emailing you in a panic because our check scanner died. Um, it's 14 years old. Gary met me here the other night and confirmed it's no longer working. We had been babying it for the last year or two anyways, we were only doing one check at a time, because it wasn't reading them correctly, and then we kept having connectivity problems. So I think it was just slowly going, and it finally did go. And I also wanted to say that when we first started, when the town first started doing the scanner, I was the manager of the merchants' bank in town, and we gave, when we left town, we gave the town the scanner that we currently have. So there was no cost when we got it, but now there's a cost, um, the bank doesn't fund it anymore, so. So it's $660 is what it ended up, and I should have it by Wednesday.
Okay.
Next week. So with that being said, I'm gonna, I'm trying to combine days of going to the bank, because I don't have any room in my mileage and, you know, the.
Well, you're already with the new printer, it puts you over in tax.
Right. I do support in that mileage, it, I'm gonna be over a long.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to combine days, so it's not too bad, and hopefully Wednesday it will come and we can plug it right in, so.
Okay.
I handed out the copies, your copies of the audit, so that's all done. And I wrote on the audit, um, bid to put out, and, um, so I've sent those out, and they'll come, I've requested them to have their bids in by November 16th. That's the lead second meeting in November for you guys to open, and I will review them as well. Hopefully talk to the people like I did in the past. So, um, hopefully that's not too soon for firms, but, um, the few responses that I got already, they're scrambling like the current audit firm with staff.
Yeah.
They said one benefit is that we are a calendar year, so not, it's, it's divided, but it will be easier for them to do calendar year, um, than June.
Yes.
Plus, plus, plus the hectic.
Yeah.
And I put together the townwide mowing, um, bids, and I want you to look for the ad for the paper, and again, I did November 16th date, see if we get any. Um, so I'd like you to review that and let me know if it sounds good, kind of copy what we did before. But I didn't know who was going to be the contact person. Like last time Deborah Jurist was the contact person, so I just need that, um, updated so I can put it in the papers. Other than that, we're just getting ready for Budget Day and trying to get everything paid as much as possible so our budgets look, look good for Budget Day. And that's it, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yep, thanks. Okay, uh, tech clerk? Carrie.
So absentee ballots have been coming in nicely, pretty steadily every day, so we're up to 107 have been received so far.
Out of 600 registered, 700?
707, I think, but 780, if you don't count challenge, 707.
Yeah.
Um, so everyone just needs to remember to get it in or come in and vote. I did have some people wondering if we're still gonna have the polls open, and I said yes, and that's not changed. The state changed the, you know, to mailing the ballots for the general election, so that's, that was on them at their expense, and I'd say it's going okay, there's always, you know, sometimes it's on, on the person, you know, if you, you move out of town and don't register to vote where you are, you know, it's a process to move someone off the checklist, but we can challenge them, but to be officially purged, as they call it, off, takes a long time. But luckily the challenged, um, you know, I can go in, I see a property transfer if someone's moved out of town, you know, I can challenge them, and then, you know, as long as it was before the state took our checklist, you know, that they didn't receive a ballot, but if it was after September 9th and you move, your name was already given to the states.
Yeah.
But all that's, I think, going fine. We're gonna test the tabulator, get that process done, which is a process, but they suggest doing it like 10 days before, so it's good to.
Not the morning, okay, no, no.
Get all the kinks out of it. Uh, the other thing that I, that we need to talk about is Sarah Dennis is one of those people who has moved out of town and is also our school board member, one of them. So the town, again, is in need of a school board member.
We just did this.
Yeah.
What was the process?
Who, uh.
We appointed, we appointed.
Did we get, did we get correspondence from the, from the school board?
No, I mean, I knew Sarah moved, and I emailed, I thought about it and forgot about it, to be honest, and then emailed Angeline again, I said, we, I take it we'll have to do the same process, and she said, yes, I saw it in their minutes, saying, you know, you're interested to reach out to them or us, us to them, you know, I guess they, like we learned last time, were the.
Appointee.
Final decision.
Appointe for.
Yeah. So.
For the appointment, she's, whoever replaces still has to be elected.
Yeah.
On town meeting.
They'll still run, they'll run the rest of Sarah's term.
Who was up this year, was it Sarah, not that convenient, was it? Might have been.
It might be, that wasn't Allison, she just got off.
Yeah.
Sandra, it could be that Sandra, I think she finished the one-year term, it might be her.
What I think that means is that all three representatives are up for election this year.
Well, not Allison, but the other two, I think, well, the one is.
No, but Allison was appointed.
No, she was elected.
She was appointed before the town meeting vote.
Yeah, she was elected like normal.
Yeah, oh, great, gotcha.
It's Sandra who was, who jumped in.
Okay, for the one-year term, the remainder of the term.
The remainder, so I think.
So we're gonna have two people up for election.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then they'll, that first, it will run whatever Sarah's term was, but I can't remember.
Yeah.
So if anyone knows anybody, reach out.
That conduit would be a good one.
Aaron Smith with all his children at school.
I did run, I did tar feathers, run on a rail.
Maybe Alyssa's. Right.
I just, I, I.
I don't think you guys can be actually.
I just want to make sure it's clear, I'm, I'm.
I wanted to, I would have done it.
Oh, yeah, right.
My hands are tied here, so.
I, I just, I'm disappointed that the school board doesn't feel that it's appropriate or, or respectful to consider following the rules to let us know and correspond when someone leaves the school board, it's, you know.
Well, maybe I'll say they figure, we figure it out with our community member that's moved, I guess.
Well, but they have, they, by their own law, bylaws, they have a, they, they have a, they specifically have, you know, a stipulation that they have to contact the town to let us know when our representative is leaving. Like, I know that it's our, our community member, but still, they, they need to inform us of this stuff.
No, yeah, because she, she finally resigned.
And all of this, I mean, it hasn't impacted our taxes potentially, you know, that's my point. And so we're supposed to be properly represented, and, and we're not, and that's my, it's, it, it's a disappointment at this point, and we, we really should be, you know, we do everything in our power to, to provide that information when we can, and, you know, and, exactly, we, we need to be working together, you know, I, you know, especially with the way everything's structured. It'd be great if they would, uh, if they would be a little bit more amicable to communicating with us. I mean, my disappointment is more in the lack of communication than the fact that, you know, that, uh, that somebody left, and it, you know, that's gonna go up for, you know, that seat's up for bid, you know, up for, up for appointment, so, just the communication would be, would be nice. I don't, anyway, what, what else you got, Carrie?
I think that is it.
Now, you've got that all worked out?
Okay. Anything from Dorothy for the Assistant Assessor?
No, we asked her if she was coming, and she said she, they really have, you know, a conference.
Okay.
Uh, we're ready to fire fast. Uh, we got two members in the fire department, it started their level one training last week, week before last, that's up in Danville.
Yep.
So.
Gotcha. Uh, anything from?
What about your fire school?
Down at Blue Mountain, uh, that, that went very, very well, at, um.
I was very worried that day, that they did not know about it. Your vehicles were here, and I'm like, oh my gosh, they're out on the column. Hours and hours, I'm like, they're still out. What's going on? Like, what is burning down?
The, uh, Groton Fire Department, Ryan Gate Fire Department, Wells River Fire Department went down last Thursday, I think it was last Thursday, the Blue Mountain for Fire Prevention Day. So, um, we had four members from Groton go down. And actually, myself and the guys from Groton, yeah, other firefighters from Groton, went around classroom to classroom and did a presentation to the kids. So, and then Wells River was outside with air trucks, and then we did 20 minutes, and then they went outside and went through trucks for 20 minutes, so.
Cool.
It's, uh, it's good, I love, I've, I've been doing it a number of years.
Did they do the smoke room, or no?
They didn't, uh, we didn't get the, um, props in time, so, um, but, uh, it's pre-K through four. So, um, personally, I'd rather see like everybody in school. If, if the number, number two cause of arson is juvenile fire starters, so.
Like, if you.
Put your kids' mind.
So if you could like get them to school every year and tell them, fire is dangerous, but.
Well, that's great, that's, that's good, glad we were, we had representation there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good. And then, uh, I told Alyssa, I said, now, every time, like for the next two months when I go down to school, you're not firing.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had to message my kids all of them, say, is the fire truck at school? I'm like, yeah, oh my god, what happened?
Alright, uh, any for the constable? Didn't hear anything.
No, we came in and, you know, we went over, left on the dog list, so that's going well.
Just checking names off that list, getting closer.
Yeah, I'm doing.
But only down, down the street, that's great.
Yeah, it's great.
That's, that's good.
Yeah, if you put somebody in charge of something, that's, here's your job, do this. Um, nothing to report with, uh, deputies, Calden County Sheriff, they've been?
No, he popped in one day, last week or maybe the week before. Yeah, he's sitting there, and, you know, saying, you know, I thought everything was gone, and I said, good. They're out there, you never know, and today I didn't think I'd see them, and all of a sudden later in the day, they're out here.
About 2:30 or so.
Yeah, right, yeah, at far, yeah. And then, you know, I see him leave, and I think he takes, they take a little trip, come back, park for a while.
Okay.
We have to receive some money, um.
Sure, tickets.
Tickets, yeah.
Good.
So, so that's happening.
Yeah.
Well, I still, I don't know how we handle it, but the other night, I don't know if anybody noticed.
Tire tracks.
Tire tracks from Will Street all the way to my driveway. It's, somebody-
Where you going?
I don't know, but it was at, it was at like 11:30 or 12:00 at night.
That's when it is, it's by my house too.
I heard it, I heard him squeal, squeal tires, it was, it must've been a truck, but it fished tail all the way down the street.
Scary.
Yeah. I think I actually-
I know.
I don't know if it was them, but the, the first house passed down here, that mailbox was knocked off too, I don't know if that had something to do with it, but, but anyway.
$900 per four tires on your truck, I can't imagine people-
Get them fancy Firestone, all terrain ones too, they go quick. All right, um, library, nothing from the library, I don't think. All right, uh, zoning, nothing from zoning. Nothing from health officer, we're still looking for a health officer, if somebody's interested. I don't know, maybe I'll talk Mark into it.
Yep, maybe.
Maintenance, anything for maintenance?
Did Garrett come clean the fences?
No, that's November.
November.
Yeah. And highways on the list now, I, I'm gonna do a whole day in being from.
So, something for us, I don't know, do we, we talked about it a while ago, but one of the things I noticed again, and I notice every, I don't notice it except for when I go out the back door of the gym, but that, that ramp back there starting to deteriorate pretty well, were we waiting until we got the other infrastructure stuff done first?
We're waiting, because it's all-
Till everything's done and then tie it into the front.
Yeah.
With the idea of-
I mean, we just won't use it, I mean, it's just-
It's emergency.
It's emergency, yeah, I just don't want there to be an emergency, it's only it's for going out the back door. I don't know, we, we, we talked about turning in the stairs too and not necessarily-
Yeah, yeah, like the platform. Clasmas, how they-
And then a ramp still, because I think it's, it has to be handy.
You start the ADA end now, yeah.
Yeah, but it's-
I mean, I know we have the other ramp.
There, there, yeah, there, we, we need to-
Might be able to look into somebody just patching it, it's a lot of that, that chunk of cement that just keeps coming off.
Yeah, it could, could be just, you know, pour a couple bags of concrete over it to hold it together till we fix it. All right, yeah.
Too late this year, yeah.
Right, yeah, this year's probably too late, uh, we don't really, you know, other than basketball, a lot of stuff going on up there, I don't think there's gonna be any huge events that'll need it.
Election?
Election, well, yeah.
Well, do you want me to contact Frank Page, that's who we were talking to about it?
I don't know, I think it'd be all right.
I think it'd be all right, yeah, yeah, maybe something we'll look at in the spring if we've got-
I don't know if it would be Frank, I mean, in my mind, it was more of a handyman sort of to come and skim, put a skim coat across the top and kind of hold it all together. But.
All right.
Uh, IT? Thinking, thinking about budgets. 2014 is the year that we purchased all PCs for the fire department, the server, town clerk, every, just majority of them, there were a few that had been purchased afterwards, some laptops, maybe one at the workstation. But majority of the equipment here is from 2014. And to replace those, we've got a price for budget purposes, gonna go, uh, it's gonna be $1,379 apiece. That's with monitors, so.
With, with monitors?
With monitors.
I don't know, we-
We didn't buy monitors last time. So that might be something we could save $150 and take monitors off.
Monitors are also be 16-year old at that point, you know, right?
Right. So some people, but some people may want, 'cause a lot of their monitors were carried over, but some of them, got new ones since too. But, um, so it's, you know, if it's seven PCs, that's $9,600. So I don't know how you wanna plan for that, um, 'cause it's nine years next year, so.
Let's push it for a PC.
In the, in this, so, you know, um, this company that we buy from Dak Tech, who you probably have never heard of, that's who BMU has used for years, and I never heard of for them, and Todd has had excellent luck with them. And, um, you know, I did my research in 2014 and it was the best price, and but what really sold me is their seven-year part warranty. Which, if you remember right, I replaced a motherboard last year, or two years ago, under the warranty.
Nice.
You know, uh, and it's just been rock solid pieces of equipment. I think the only other failure we had was the power supply in the firehouse real early on. I know, I, you know, we can ask the ladies what they think, but I think they've been good pieces of equipment. Server would recommend going into them again, and that's who I got the price from, too.
I, I, my personal thought, Carrie, is it's a lot of money to put in the budget to, in one, in one year, considering we're gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty tight budget.
Yeah.
My, my question would be, you know, can we phase in a couple at a time over the next couple of years?
Yep.
And/or, my other thought too is, is, you know, do we, do we plan that and then we look for some sort of grant funding that we could potentially get to help, you know, offset the costs?
Maybe for, how do you feel the community is about reserve funds? We close the reserve fund for that.
Yeah. We might, that might be, well, the, still running to the issue of how do we build the reserve, I mean, we-
Still gotta put money into the reserve.
We're gonna still have to put money into the reserve in addition to buying computers. That's the, you know, so what I'm almost thinking is, is if you were to do it, you put, you know, you get two computers, right, that's like 2,600 bucks, and you put 2,000 in the reserve, and we do that for the next three or four years, and then that reserve is there until the next, you know, seven-year time.
We're not, not sure that the seven-year old computers will go four years.
No, I know, that's, that's the, that's the hard part.
I'm giving you a year or two notes. Not a four year.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that would be the other thing, is, is we split that $9,600 up between-
I mean, I would, um, this day and age, you gotta have the computer, you know what I mean? So I like your idea of splitting it up, I'd almost do it, you know, three one year, yeah, for the next, just so you don't run the risk of-
Yeah.
And I'd be perfectly fine with installing three at a time versus seven at a time. Yeah, I mean, I just, you, nothing gets done, that's the joke.
But I think, you know, this, this is a great example of why we need to have the reserve funds that we need, plus a reserve. This reserve fund, these computers have lasted about eight, nine years, going on almost nine years. $500 across nine years, or $1,000 across nine years, guess what? You've got your money in a reserve fund that we've collected over time.
But the same, but the reason, one reason why I didn't think we should keep the reserve fund, 'cause probably three years ago, the same PC was probably $800.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all, it's, it's just gone crazy.
Yeah.
The prices start. It's just absolutely crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there were $550 apiece in 2014.
Well, I just, I wanna make sure too, like, if we're talking, we replace them now, they've got a seven-year parts, you know, parts of labor warranty that we plan before the end of seven years to replace everything again, because then we're not outside of that, because if one of the computers breaks down now, we're gonna be paying for parts to fix something.
Right.
So that's where, you know, it makes sense, you know, fiscally anyway, to save some of that money so that that year seven, or year six and a half, we start replacing those computers and, and we're rotating that stuff through before warranties run out. So. So, I mean, I, I would definitely say, yeah, let's, why don't we do that from a budget standpoint, let's think about doing, you know, three, three next year and four the following year.
So I won't be here on that Saturday, how do you want?
Yeah, I think that's fine, when we sit down, we'll make sure we'll, yeah, send the app, well, you know, yeah.
The, you know, when it comes to tabular, I mean, this is, this is not something that we're gonna hold, it's something to budget on.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I wanted to get. Carrie, do you remember how much that, um, one we put in the garage was? Wasn't that like $900?
Yeah, it was, that little.
Yeah, it's a little tiny thing, but, but it's been rock, it's been good.
Yeah, it's fine.
And it's in a dirty environment, but it's probably even more expensive than these. Probably don't need to go to that room. So, um- How much does a cell phone cost? How much does a cell phone cost?
Uh, I just got new cell phones, VA in September, and it, so a week before the iPhone 14 came out, I got 13s and it was like $1,100 apiece for, for an iPhone. Of course, you finance it out.
How much is your foot phone? I don't have a foot phone. I don't have a cell phone either, that's why. My PC and a cell phone, I mean, are they like, come even with each other at this point, I mean?
So I guess that would be the other question, is, is do they, and I'm asking, maybe this is, uh, but do they, will they finance that stuff with the town? Can we finance all seven of them?
Do they do finance too?
I don't know if that's something we wanna think about too, 'cause then we're not, you know, we could break it up over a few, few years or not. Could be another headache, but, yeah.
Yeah. I think doing three, four, whatever, you know?
Yeah, I mean-
Couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're right on the edge of it, I mean, I'd rather do like, in a perfect world, two, three, two, and then not everything is the same vintage. You know what I mean? You've got three years separating between, but-
Which means that if we get, start getting new computers, that means in 2027 or 2028, we should start replacing the computers again, just to keep them, you know, rotating through four, seven years, but anyway.
That might be down the road, I think we should get them replaced now.
Exactly.
As quick as we can and maybe long-term, look at staggering them.
So do we, do we think that we should look at bringing back a reserve fund, or should we just budget it? Budget it down the road.
We're gonna have to budget it, that, this, this go around anyway.
This go around anyways, yeah, but I'm wondering, do we want-
Do a reserve?
Do we wanna do, yeah. And again, I mean, $9,600 over, you know, two, two years, you know, we, especially when we squabbled over, you know, a couple thousand dollars in this budget year, and we're gonna have, this is, it's gonna come, I'm sure it's gonna be questioned, you know, is, you know, making sure that we've got a plan, 'cause I mean, I, I think the more, the more we can try to offset large purchases of, you know, thousands of dollars by having a reserve fund that we can kind of trickle funds into and then spend, I think it makes a lot of sense.
What was the reserve? Was it just enter technology?
It was Office, I remember, it's called Office Computer.
Yeah.
I think we should just have an office equipment reserve fund, 'cause we've got scanners, we've got computers.
You've got everybody's budget line has. Everybody, departments have.
Everyone has it over there.
They're, they're money in there too, and that's the problem, that you go up at the town meeting and-
The, the, the reason why we didn't keep it going is because the prices had dropped so much back then. That's why we didn't continue going with it, and we figured it would just, everybody, you just, it was cheap enough, you just throw it in the general fund, in the lineup. But now, now, you know, 2020 hits and everything is just, you know, just gone sky crazy expensive.
Yeah.
It's just done the complete opposite, so it's good and cheaper.
So maybe some, maybe in the future it'll be cheaper.
It may turn around, but I just, when's that gonna happen? We don't, you know?
Exactly. Okay, so-
Uh, as far as other things, um, you know, um, we've got Lisa's new printer set up and I believe it's working good, I'm happy with that. We got rid of one printer. We kept the old Canon there as a backup. Do the wireless work in here? Have, I haven't heard any complaints.
For the most part, it does.
Oh, the Wi-Fi, yeah, the Wi-Fi.
The Wi-Fi hotspot in here doesn't work.
Yeah.
The Wi-Fi box there?
No, the one outside, the, the-
Groton hotspot?
Yeah.
No one can seem to get onto that.
From, from here, when I'm outside, I can get on it, it's right on here, that's why I put that here. Yeah, yeah, no, that seems to work okay.
Okay.
As long as I'm walking to it.
Yeah, but it's these brick walls.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, otherwise, I think it, they're working good.
Okay.
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't really heard any complaints.
Other thing is that Verizon thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if it's-
I mean, I, my opinion is you don't need it anymore, 'cause most phones will dial over Wi-Fi.
The only one I ever lost about it, it was this one person.
The person who bought it.
Yeah, so.
But I, and the part of it too is, is so people, I mean, you, you probably know this, but to do Wi-Fi calling, a lot of people don't realize that you actually have to put in your app, well, not just app, you have to register your emergency address through your carrier in order for Wi-Fi calling, so I had to put my home address in as my emergency, you know, 911 address.
You guys need to realize.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's probably just how we call it, but, no, who, I thought about it for was the sheriff. When he's sitting out here, which I guess he can come use the Wi-Fi, but was then having Verizon, was having cell service, I don't know how far that thing goes, but.
Doesn't use that far.
Okay.
What's that, Wi-Fi?
Verizon, the Verizon or the Wi-Fi?
The Verizon.
What's, what?
It's just a circle, I mean.
Where's, what, so wait, I'm lost, what's the Verizon thing?
We have a Verizon box that died, that provides a Verizon wireless signal inside the building.
Boost cell service.
Oh, fine, that's, yeah.
We've had it for, since I was on the board, and it died. And it was the purpose, and the Groton Growers, uh, community group, it's Farmers Markers, bought it uh, so that they could run their, um, credit card machines off a cell, cell phone.
Yeah.
So, but-
Is that, I might, I've, I've noticed, 'cause I mean, I've got Verizon, I've noticed that, you know, it, it switches to Wi-Fi calling now or like, you know, this isn't registered at all, so it doesn't, if I don't, if I'm not signed into the Wi-Fi, I don't have services. Before, I was getting, you know, service, but I don't know, I mean, as long as you're set up with Wi-Fi calling, you don't need a booster anymore.
Right, well, that was my point, and they're, they're only, they're $240, uh, but.
They have lights out there.
But.
Well, maybe the guy that got us the hotspot, he has a booster.
Throw it away.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
And it's gonna just throw away, right?
What?
The scanner, it should just go away?
Yeah, well, you, you have to recycle it with the cross.
Yeah, all right, but, that's what we need.
Yeah.
All right, uh, we're good on the planning commission. All right, open to the public of other business, we have just this, where to put it, oh, I gave it to Mike. The, yeah, thanks, Carrie. The FEMA letter, do you have a copy of it, or I gave it to Mike, the copy I had, I think you took with you. So that was, we just had correspondence from FEMA about the flood protection stuff. I think is what it was in reference to, but it was, there was no action, it was just notifying us of the, what FEMA's working on, so. Anything else for open to the public of the business? I don't think so. Anyone in the gallery?
Thanks, Lee, but, did you pay him to say that, Lisa?
What did he say?
Yeah, like the layout.
Oh, nice layout, no. He did give his opinion, so.
There you go. All right, with that, um-
Well, set a meeting for November 2nd, but it's also October 29th is the next meeting.
So October 29th, yeah, so October 29th at, starting at 8:00, right?
Yes.
If you come at 7:30, 7:45, I'll bring food or something, I don't know.
If somebody comes out early, then they have to bring lunch things or something.
Well, yeah, that means I have to be up even earlier.
I know, I'm not driving past Dunkin' Donuts on.
No.
Come on.
And just so you know, I found out that that weekend is an antlers muzzle over season, I did not realize. Now, now it's interfering with the kid. No, I'm just kidding, um, so I think the agenda's set for that, right? I don't think there was anything we needed to do to adjust.
No, no.
Um, I think the only thing, if you're, you know, what, that I wanna have kind of ahead of that will just be, um, the wages form, so we can look that over. We've got the benefits information, we've got meetings coming for that, or we, Blue Cross Blue Shield is coming, right?
Blue Cross is coming next Wednesday.
Correct, yeah.
And then I haven't heard back from MVP. I did find out MVP is actually a little cheaper.
Okay, what is, which plan is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go-
I didn't highlight it.
Which, which one of it is, is it the MVP VT plans, Platinum, is that? Do you remember which one it was? I don't know which one cross-referenced is over, I'm guessing it's that.
From the Blue Cross?
Or from MVP, I've got the one from Blue Cross highlighted. Or from MVP, I've got the one from Blue Cross highlighted. Which one is comparable for MVP? Is it that Platinum? Yeah, okay, I sort of thought, I wasn't 100% sure, but, so, we'll review that, too. So, if we're able to get MVP in before the meeting, that would be great, if not, um, maybe, you know, just comes down to what? We need to have that discussed on that day. And then...
Then November 2nd.
November 2nd, I mean, I'm just gonna, it'll be, I don't really have anything other than, I think everything else that we had that was outside of department updates, we can take off, and then we're gonna just, we'll add some stuff. So, but that's the day before, well, that's, the meeting is the Wednesday before Election Day, right?
Last week of taxes.
Last, last week of taxes.
And we really crazy.
Well, there's nothing going on, I mean, we're having a meeting on 29th, so we wanna consider canceling the 29th, the November 2nd meeting?
No.
Okay.
Well, hopefully we'll get those figures on the 29th, so we can get them in, and get them printed, and see what things are looking like. You know, most likely just put in this year's figures for things we don't know, like capacity insurance, all that stuff. The things that we don't get till, at the November.
Okay.
So I will have everything ready for you guys, anybody that gives me budgets ahead of time, I'll print and give to you. So you might wanna check the folder before Saturday, so you can have a second to look at them. I've asked people to give them up on the Wednesday before, 26th.
And I, no, I sent an email out to everybody, just...
Yes, you did.
Just reminding everyone that I think we need to be very conscious about our budget. And, you know, town meeting's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a regular town meeting, not Australian ballot, so we can make adjustments on the floor, but, you know, I'd like to try to present a budget to the town that's actually, you know...
Acceptable.
Acceptable, ahead of that, and not have too much controversy, if possible, so. Okay.
Make a motion.
Make a motion?
Close the meeting.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came. Appreciate it.
And ask on camera, it was Dave Sandow situation.